Okay, Mr. Chairman, we are live. We are all set.
Thank you, Teresa. I want to welcome everyone who may be joining us via Zoom or phone. Welcome the commissioners and the staff from the town to the September 2nd, 2020 Planning Commission meeting for the town of Hilton Head Island. Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Here.
All right, the next item on our agenda is approval of our approval of our agenda. The staff have any changes to our agenda, Teresa?
No, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda from among the commissioners?
No, no.
Okay, Stephen and Leslie has a second. And commissioners, if you have any suggested changes to the agenda, when Teresa calls the roll, if you approve of the agenda, say aye. If you have a suggested change, please announce it at that time. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. And we have minutes on our agenda. However, we are holding those to the next meeting. We have no unfinished business. Our new business is a recommendation of the proposed CIP fiscal year 2021 priority projects to the town council. And this will be a recommendation by the planning commission to the town council. And Scott Leagit provides the staff support for that particular function. The CIP committee and I believe Todd Theodore chairs that particular subcommittee of the town council. Scott, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, sir, I'm happy to do that. And with your indulgence, though, before I get into my remarks, I'm happy to yield the floor to the committee chairman if there are any introductory remarks that he would care to make.
Scott, anything to add?
No, not really. I just said before the pandemic hit, I think we had some great public input meetings. And I think as Scott said earlier, that I think we were one of the last public meetings before things began to shut down. So it's great to see this thing pick back up again.
Scott, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to you and the rest of the commission. Included in your package are simply two documents, the cover memo that where I attempted to relay some of the process and procedures that brings us here to today's discussion, along with the single-page priority listing of proposed projects that has emanated from the CIP committee. If there are any process or procedure-type questions, I'm happy to answer those. Also, one of the things that I don't believe I commented on from a housekeeping standpoint that's contained there towards the end of that memo is the simple fact that four projects that have been identified previously by the commission as being priority projects and that have in fact been funded, there really is not a need for the commission to re-identify those projects. The convention here internally with the town is that once these projects are funded by council, we will run them to completion. And so there isn't a need to revisit things, for instance, like the Low Country Celebration Park, which is not yet complete but fully funded and will be completed here soon. Same for Fire Station Number Two in Seapines. And there are a list of other projects there at the end of that memo that I would draw your attention to. So we don't need to spend time with that. What I am prepared to do today, and I can share my screen here in a little bit for ease of viewing on the part of the commission and from the public that may be viewing, what I'm most prepared today to do is literally run through the list of proposed projects broken down by category. And as I often do during this presentation, I would invite the commissioners to take a look at these lists and simply ask the question, are there things on this list that should not be? And are there projects that are not identified that should be? And if we answer yes to one of those questions, then we need to identify how and where a project like that may be inserted or how and where projects may be de-emphasized and removed from the list. I would reiterate what the committee chairman had made mention of. I thought we had a couple of very good meetings, lots of public input, staff input to arrive at this list. And if there are no questions before we get into the list, I'm prepared to share my screen here. And we can literally start running through the the project categories and the projects that are identified.
Any questions for Scott among the commissioners? Well, Scott, let's proceed.
Okay, is that list showing up on everybody's screen?
That's affirmative.
Okay. And we'll start like we typically do with this pathway category. And I think that you all will see what are probably some relatively familiar projects, given what has occurred in the past with our ability to fund these. The project category is led by what's identified as pathways accessibility and safety enhancement projects, which is really meant to be a programmatic type element, a suite of localized, small-scale improvements that staff historically, working with the Bicycle Advisory Committee, will endeavor to do. It boils down to things like signage, pavement markings, maybe small-scale pavement connections, but it is not the whole-scale construction of new pathway segments. It's something that is relatively recent, let's say, perhaps within the last five years was in addition to the program and is something that we would recommend be identified for priority treatment. Project number two is the potential continuation of the town's crosswalk lighting initiative. I can report here to the commission that the proposed lighting project at Yacht Cove, which has been a significant point of discussion the last couple of years, has in fact been completed and went live here with power on two weeks ago Friday. And so we now are in the process of assessing that completed work, receiving public input regarding the completion of that project. And if so directed by council to advance this initiative, basically turn the pilot project into something more programmatic. What staff would recommend be done and what the committee endorses is taking a look at the William Hilton Parkway, Pembetta Parkway area, the Oaks there on the the north end, roughly between Matthews Drive and Beach City Road as an area of focus for this initiative. And I would also tell you or draw attention to this pathway project and one of the roadway improvement initiatives that we'll get to here in a little bit. Main Street Pathway, again, this has been a project that's been discussed in prior years, but we've been unable to advance it either from a funding standpoint or more importantly, a property owner standpoint. I believe you all are aware that Main Street itself, at least that portion of it, between Hooping Crane Way and Wilborn Road remains in private ownership. I can report that discussions are active, I would describe, between the road owner and town council and presumably with the successful public dedication of that road, the potential for a Main Street pathway comes to light. And again, this project is linked to one of the roadway projects listed below. But again, something that was thought to be important in a priority of staff and the committee. The next two projects, Projects Four and Five, relate to the established initiative of the town, which is long-term to provide pathways along both sides of William Hilton Parkway. In general, the town's initial program back from 30-plus years ago focused on the completion of a pathway along the westbound lanes. And we've been working here in recent years to provide a pathway along the eastbound lanes. And so Projects Four and Five would essentially let us fill some gaps that exist on the the eastbound side of the highway and some projects that we'd spent a little bit of time with here a few years back that were cut off due to inavailability of funding, but we would like to return to those areas. And Projects Six, Seven, and Eight, I think are as described. Seven and Eight relate to improvements that were identified as part of the circle-to-circle initiative that have not yet been funded. And the Shelter Cove Lane, Project Number Six, as proposed, would provide a pathway connection there at the southernmost Shelter Cove Lane intersection to the Shelter Cove Community Park. And so that's the summary of the eight projects that presented themselves. I'm happy as we go through category by category, I would recommend and suggest that that we take questions by category rather than hold them to the end. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any, regarding the pathway components as proposed.
Any questions among the commissioners?
I have a question.
Please, Levon.
You had mentioned the Whooping Crane Road. You said that's there's some discussion going on with that. You know any more about how that's progressing and what your thoughts are about that project?
With, yeah, it was related to the Main Street pathway and the potential public dedication of that private road to the town. The discussions of late have mostly focused on the fact that that road in its current state is deficient. The day after the town acquires that road, if we do so, there is going to be, in my opinion, an immediate need for us to at least address some immediate maintenance, if not a larger-scale project of deferred maintenance to bring that road up to what I would say are town standards. And so the discussions to this point largely have been focused on, from a standpoint of financial fairness, how much may the town unburden the current road owner from those financial obligations? And what is the willingness of the current road owner to at least assist in some form or fashion with that endeavor? There was some concern that we may not want to take on a large-scale financial commitment as taking on that road would be. And so we're trying to strike a deal, if that answers the question.
And Levon, from a, I can give you a little bit more background. That particular road has been an issue for some 20 years now. And the the main issue is, as Scott indicated, it is in very poor condition maintenance-wise. And does the town take over a road that is deficient without any type of, you know, monetary support from those who currently own the road? The the other issue is that that road serves as a pathway for a multitude of youngsters who access the Hilton Head Campus of Schools. And it came from a variety of locations, including Hilton Head Plantation. And there is not a sole pathway that runs the entire length of that road, which is a safety concern. So those two are intricately tied together. And we would hope that sometime in the future, the private owner of that road, which is a group of business owners, will work a deal that is amenable to the town and fair to the town, take the road over so that we can get that road into some type of standard and also develop a pathway along there for the safety of the youngsters accessing that school campus.
Yeah, I just wanted to reemphasize that. And thank you for pointing that out. I know it is a safety concern. And I travel that road quite often as well. And there's always, you have to look out for folks that are walking, even biking down that road. So yes, it is a major safety concern. I hope that the town will be progressive and aggressive in trying to strike that deal and keep that in front of us.
And in fairness to the arguments being put forth by the private road owner, the public has enjoyed free and unfettered access to the use of that private road without expending any dollars for maintenance. Herefore, all of the maintenance has been borne by the the private road owners. And so from their standpoint, is there any consideration for that fact? And I am hopeful that that we'll be able to reach a deal, both from a fairness standpoint, that both sides, from the the point of the town council and the road owner, believe they've got a fair deal that's in the best interest of the general public. And that's where I think we're trying to drive this one to.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question, Levon. Any other questions from the commissioners? Otherwise, we will have Scott move on to the next segment.
Our next segment being roadway improvements. And there may not be much more to discuss here with Main Street. But from the town's staff perspective, the roadway improvements and the pathway conceivably can and should be linked. There is a fair amount of work that we expect to be necessary if that road does become publicly owned from a structural pavement deficiency standpoint, curb and gutter drainage, as we typically try to do and per council policy, construct pathways along any of our roadway improvements. So we would endeavor to piece those together in a complimentary way. But it did rise to the the number-one position in our roadway improvements. Of course, all of this predicated on this successful public dedication. Project number two is the last of our programmatic improvements to replace the span wire traffic signal installations here on the island with the more decorative mast arm traffic signal signals. And so that's what we would start on. We just completed the work. I think you all are familiar there in Shelter Cove. And so this would let us get on with that last of the the installations and cross that program off the list altogether. Number three, and this is a relatively new discussion, although as we stepped back and what the committee seemed receptive to discussing, over the years, the town has had a variety of individual initiatives within this corridor that we would frame as roughly being from Automobile Place there on the north end to Dillon Road there on the south end. And these initiatives have run the gamut from median and median improvements, turn lane improvements. We talked about crosswalk lighting improvements. The town, as a relatively recent initiative, has purchased the Modern Classic Motor Site. And working with the DOT and the county is endeavoring to have what we believe is excess right-of-way relinquished to the town for the purposes of being combined with that property in a strategic way so that we can then turn around and and market it and ideally sell it to be developed here going forward. And so the thinking being identifying a project corridor bound by those two roadway intersections, looking to make crosswalk improvements, pathway improvements, lighting, signage, and the like. And so this was would be a project, if funded, that would allow us to embark on that endeavor. Projects number four and five have emerged really as part of the observations that have gone on as part of our annual traffic report. The deficiencies that they would correct, however, really haven't and probably wouldn't rise to the level of an overall intersection operational deficiency and really fall more into what I would say is a good or proper idea to advance. And they involve the construction in number four of an additional or a right turn lane, I guess I should say, at the Arrow Road, Pembetta Bay Road intersection where we currently don't have one. And project number five would be a series of localized turn lane extensions at Wilborn Road, access serving the school campus in both directions, at Pembroke Drive and at Matthews Drive North, where we can see folks literally driving off the road to access the turn lanes, indicating that we either need to lengthen the turn lane or work to better control those vehicles. And so that's what is meant by Projects Four and Five.
Questions for Scott on the roadway improvement category? A hearing none. Scott, park development?
Park development. We pretty quickly get into within this category what I would suggest could be the Keystone projects of the whole program for the upcoming year, as well as setting the stage for the same sort of designation through the next many several years. Chaplain Linear Park, number one, you all may recall, is the last specific project that was identified and linked to the town's tax increment financing district that we embarked on here in 1999. And so with the conclusion of Low Country Celebration Park, what staff and the committee is recommending is that we focus our attentions and fully develop the Chaplain Linear Park concept from the various ideas that have circulated, making this a priority because the TIF funding has an expiration date of 2024. So another four years, we need to have committed the funds that we envision spending for that project. So we've got some work to do here, similarly to what has to occur on Two, Three, and Four, to put the puzzle pieces together, confirm what elements would be part of that project as we envision it and advance it through concept, through design, through permitting, and to construction. And for the benefit of those that may be viewing, the notion of this property would be to serve as a functional bookend to the Shelter Cove Community Park with the development of a facility there on what we call the peninsula of land between Chaplain Community Park and the beach to provide potential trailhead-type access, beach access, bathroom buildings, perhaps some other facilities, and then a physical pathway connection between that bookend and Shelter Cove Park. And of course, we would have pathway connections along the creek side of William Hilton Parkway, as well as a crossing of the highway to have planned as part of that. Projects Two, Three, and Four are all running a similar track in that each of them was identified as part of our recently completed Parks and Rec Master Plan. Pretty significant happenings identified for all of them. And the Mid-Island Track, for those that may be unfamiliar, this is the Port Royal property, the Golf Course property, as it was previously called. In each instance, these large-scale properties have been identified for some level of improvement. And what the the priority position would allow us to do is to advance the concept and the planning, determining what elements could go where in keeping with the recommendations of that master plan. And so each of these potentially leads to projects measured in the millions of dollars in the future. And this is something that we would desire very much show to to get on with that early-on concept development and planning. Project number five is something that has emerged Parks and Rec Commission, smaller-scale improvements thought to be necessary or beneficial at our various recreational facilities. And you can see, as listed here, additional picnic shelter at our Barker Field Extension and some playground work, namely this poured-in surface that is the new standard for how best to treat playgrounds. And then we have some neighborhood-scale parks that are identified there at Six and Seven, along with the Capitol Project Support of the Island Rec Association. But I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the park development category, these specific ones. But this is, I do need to reinforce for for y'all's understanding that One through Four are thought to be very, very important initiatives of the town.
And Scott, Item Six and Seven, for those who may be listening in to the commissioners who may not be familiar, Taylor Family Property Park and Patterson Family Property Park. Could you put a little bit more flesh on the bones with those two?
Sure, absolutely. These are both envisioned as smaller-scale neighborhood-type parks that have emerged as part of the town's community development block grant program. The Taylor Family property is located on Wild Horse Road. And the Patterson Family property is located on Marshland Road. But again, small-scale neighborhood-type amenities envisioned at both of those.
Are they so named for the families who have donated space for these particular recreational facilities?
Yes, they relate to the historic ownership of the properties.
Any other questions from among the commissioners?
Yeah, real quick, Scott, I just want to make certain that as, or ask if y'all are thinking, that on Three and Four, I'm sorry, Two and Three, that the planning goes hand-in-hand so that when development does come around, a renovation of Chaplain, that we have additional facilities in place. So with the Mid-Island Track master planning, we want to make certain that that maybe it's moving forward prior to a renovation so that we don't we don't have downtime. So we're not losing access to fields and and those assets.
Yeah, absolutely concur. We cannot stand the notion of taking all three of these facilities offline simultaneously. And so trying to identify what the elements to occur at each park is important. But so too then is the sequencing. Once we decide what it is that we would endeavor to do, how you go about doing that so we don't cut the community off at its knees and force programs to either take a hiatus or not exist while that construction is going on. I agree 100%.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because that is, it's always been an issue with the limited number of spaces that we do currently have.
Levon, did you have your hand up as well?
I did.
Please proceed.
I had a couple of questions on the Chaplain Linear Park. You had mentioned that on the marsh side of Highway 278, as I recall, there was some challenges with some of the residents that live along that that stretch of highway. Scott, can you remind me of how we are dealing with the the property owners there? Because there's not a whole lot of land to work with there as far as the sidewalk or the pathway goes.
Right. I would suggest to you that the discussions are ongoing or will be, but you're correct that, you know, it feels like we're threading a needle a little bit because of the constraints that we have on both sides as we attempt to cross that private property. The town does envision, I think, a a bridge or some structure crossing the little inlet there of Broad Creek and then across the the town's property. But as I understand it, we have not yet made a determination, working with those affected private property owners, how best to cross or secure easements across those pieces of land like we I would expect to. So there's work still to be done in that regard. I'm not able to identify a specific alignment that we will pursue, but that will emerge as part of the concept development for that project.
Yeah, just very sensitive about that that area there. I know that was a part of the discussion from a safety standpoint, as well as how it's going to impact the property, property owners along that stretch of highway.
Right, right. Like always, it seems like there are competing interests, I think, because from one perspective, the the safety perspective, it would be beneficial to have the pathway located, relatively speaking, as distant from the highway as we can so that pathway users don't feel as though they're literally riding right beside the the traffic moving at 40 and 50 miles an hour, but also not being so heavy-handed that the pathway then encroaches or is placed on that private property to where that's thought to be problematic.
Yes, of course, over the period of time, the Highway 278 used to be a two-lane dirt road, but it is kind of, as we progress, it encroaches even more on some of those property owners there. So just trying to be sensitive to that as well.
Yes, sir.
The other question that I had was the exact location of that Taylor Family Park. You said that's on Wild Horse Road. Can you tell me exactly where that is?
Yeah, if you head, let's say, south on Wild Horse, turn onto Wild Horse from Gumtree Road. I doubt it's a quarter of a mile down that road on the left. The town long ago placed a brick monument on the property. When it was acquired back in the 90s, it had a life estate on that property, which I understand has expired. And so, but that's where the property is, that there is a brick monument there that's prominently featured on that property now.
Yeah, and I know that's another sensitive area as far as the history and the native islanders. Isn't there some, wasn't there like cemeteries or some markings there as well?
I'm not aware of that detail. There could be, but I'm not aware of that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Levon. Michael?
Yes, Scott, I got a question. The commission has been recently warned that we do not have enough publicly accessible pickleball site. And I wondered if in the discussions on any of these parks, we are looking at that sort of development for the future to provide some public pickleball sites.
Yes, in capital letters.
Can you tell me where?
I think right now what has emerged, and of course, this is where we'll get into the the detail as these project advances. As I understand it, the Chaplain Park renovation, in part because of the fact that we have racket sports that that are there now, I think the the thinking as part of that master plan work is that we could conceivably have a pickleball facility there to complement that. Similarly, what seems to have emerged from the master plan is a desire to consolidate our bat-and-ball activities, softball, baseball, Little League at Crossings Park. And so you essentially seem to have a coagulation And so you essentially seem to have a coagulation of uses with the racket sports potentially emerging there, Mid-Island and the stick-and-ball sports emerging or being reinforced down at Crossings Park.
Some of my previous statements have been misconstrued that I am against pickleball, which I am not, but I just think, you know, it's got to be put in its proper place priority-wise. But I just wanted to make sure for my pickleball friends out there that there are some places where in the future, we might solve some of their problems.
Yes, I would fully expect that a facility of some note is going to be identified to occur, whether it is at Chaplain or a different location. But yeah, it was prominently featured in the public input and the Parks and Rec Master Plan as far as a need that the town should endeavor to address.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Michael. Any other questions from among the commissioners? Thank you. Scott?
Hey, Peter, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Todd.
Scott, this may be a detail on the Chaplain Linear Park. There where that creek crossing is, it seems to be a popular place for fishing. It would be good to make sure that whatever happens there accommodates that fishing access.
Yes, sir, I agree. And we do have plans in the short term. You may remember the so-called Shelter Cove Pathway Extension and Parking. There is a complimentary piece of this that we're working on right now for parking and better pathway connection towards the Shelter Cove Community Park right now. But I agree, and that's been mentioned as well, the desire to provide better water access there as part of our work.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Okay, before I move on to the next category, anyone else on park development?
One other quick question. I recall seeing something, Scott, here more recently about handicap access to our beaches. Is that something that's on your radar as you develop these parks and certainly the beach access?
I'm aware of the discussion that took place last week, and it has occurred so recently that I guess I'm still looking and expecting information to make its way to me. As I understand it, that particular aspect didn't emerge as part of our own Parks and Rec Master Plan. And so, yeah, we would have to look as to how best to insert that in the program. But I think it's still so new and fresh that we just haven't had a chance for reality to catch up with that idea and that endeavor.
Yeah, I apologize. I think it was in relation to the island or beach park. But anyway, all of the beach accesses may have that in their consideration as you move along comprehensively.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Levon. Scott, existing facilities and infrastructure?
Yeah, just a couple of projects here. Number one, as identified back in March by the committee and by staff, was envisioned to be really two things. One, a remodeling of the current Town Council Chamber, which has remained unchanged since we moved in here to the current Town Hall in 1992. And so there was thinking there that we can or should refresh things with respect to that meeting room. And at the time, we also had talked about enhancing some physical security features here of Town Hall. And since then, that discussion has also morphed into what I would describe as health-safety features, screenings and that sort of thing that are ongoing now down here daily. And so that program may choose to morph a little bit to include not just physical security, but a health-safety piece of the remodeling and rework here at Town Hall. Number two relates to the Arts Campus renovation, and this is the project that you may recall is thought to be a joint endeavor between the town and the University of South Carolina Buford, although their operating environment has changed just like the town does in response to the pandemic. What we would like to, much similar to the way we intend to pursue the park work we described, is to engage in the facility master planning and concept development there with the presumption that we may be able to strike a deal with the university. So again, something that we're looking to advance sooner rather than later just so that we can develop those concepts and ideas and get a game plan in place going forward.
Questions among the commissioners on existing facilities and infrastructure. Todd?
Scott, where is the Arts Campus area?
It would be, and I apologize for the description, it would be at the current Arts Center as we know it. And so the question becomes, in the future scenario, what can or could be contained on that campus or that property?
Okay.
What would the elements be at that property? It may be something a little bit different than the facility that we have now. There may be some additional work, and that's what we would need to look into.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott on existing facilities and infrastructure? Thank you. Scott, new facilities?
New facilities, this is a recurring initiative that emerged during our partnership project with the Hilton Head Public Service District for their sewer expansion. And working with our fire rescue folks, there were some gaps that we would prefer to be lessened. And so with the PSD, we've got a cooperative project where we each are matching funds. And what we would endeavor to do is continue with that program, allowing us to coordinate and provide additional fire hydrants where they thought, may thought to be beneficial for the fire service. I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that somebody is without service because that is not the case. This is all about trying to make the service that we have better.
Question for Scott on the fire hydrant expansion projects.
Not so much a question, just a comment. And I'm glad to see that we're moving this project along. And it certainly came up in the discussion with our ECG Task Force. And the, I think there was a discussion about the property owners having to sign some sort of waiver if they were not within a certain distance from the fire hydrants. Are you aware of that, Scott, as you move along with this project?
I am aware of that, and I think that the town's position may have changed from that early position, but I am aware of those active discussions between the Fire Marshal's Office and the landowners, the developers, the folks that are looking to those activities as you describe. But I'm not aware that there is an existing conflict or concern, but I am aware of those discussions.
Yeah, I would certainly give the town and the Fire Department, Fire Chief, of course, some kudos in trying to mitigate that and negotiate that and have a clear understanding of that. So I hope we continue to make progress with that.
Thank you for that question, Levon. Any other questions on new facilities? Our final category, beach maintenance.
Yeah, beach maintenance. One of these that is somewhat mundane, the other is the exact opposite. Number one is the continuation of our semi-annual monitoring, the physical monitoring, the aerial photography, the annual reports that we generate to judge the condition of our beach, given that we're now, you know, three years or so here since the last project. And so we would endeavor to continue on that work. The other one, number two, that I need to put on the radar here organizationally is the potential for the next large-scale Beachville project to occur here somewhere around 2025. And what we would like to do with funding in place is embark on the offshore work that is necessary to identify suitable sand sources offshore here of Hilton Head. It would be something that I would envision from a timeframe standpoint, not commencing until later on in the fiscal year. And this is the time that we get to work in relative anonymity with respect to the project. But it is something, just from a timing standpoint, we would expect to be in a position here roughly five years to construct our next project, and we need to start that work soon.
Questions for Scott on beach maintenance, probably one of the biggest or the biggest project that we undertake on a regular basis. Scott, what was the cost of the last beach re-nourishment, which was probably right after Hurricane Matthew?
Yeah, when you roll in, the project that was underway when Matthew occurred, the repair work from Matthew, and then the Irma project, all told, 2016 through 2017, we spent about $32 million to rebuild the beaches, both as planned as part of our regular scheduled work as well as, or in addition to the storm damage repair. And there is roughly speaking about $5 million or so of damage as we see it that we were unable to repair, that we would like to as part of this next project. And thus far, our discussions with FEMA, that work is still in play for as far as the town reimbursement goes.
That is, you know, by far our largest asset besides our people are our beaches. So important projects. Other questions for Scott on beach maintenance? Okay, hearing none. We do have two citizens that have signed up to provide public comments. And this was open at the Town Hall portal. And we'll now invite those callers to chime in, and each will have three minutes apiece. Our first citizen is Heather Rath. And Heather, are you on the line?
Hey, good morning, everybody. Sorry, Peter, there's a little bit of a delay. I just wanted to say to everybody, thank you for your support of the Bicycle Advisory Committee project. Thank you for Scott for all of his hard work, and thank you for your support, your continued support of Main Street, getting that road turned over to the town in a fair manner and in a quick manner is important to the safety of everybody. So thank you very much for your support.
Well, thank you for your comment, Heather. We appreciate your participation and all your hard work on the Park and Rec Committee.
Thank you.
The second caller we have is Frank Babel. Frank, you have three minutes. Are you on the line, Frank? Okay, well, apparently Frank is not on the line. If he chimes in...
Can you hear, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Hello? Okay, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to all the members of the commission. First, we want to, on behalf of the Bike Advisory Committee, thank Scott and the town for, and Todd, and you folks for putting together a very strong 2021 SIP plan. We support it enthusiastically. But before, we have a couple of comments. We also want to thank the commission and those in the council members that are listening for supporting the Celebration Park Bike Safety and Transportation projects, and especially for the support of the Mid-Island US 278 Corridor Project. It used to be a real challenge to cross the William Hilton Parkway to get to and from Shelter Cove and the Town Center, but it's now safe. The new signalized crosswalks and the widened underpass went heavy use by bikers and pedestrians all summer and gave the safe south end some relief from the very heavy bike traffic. We feel very strongly that this corridor approach is a much more effective way to look at general areas than responding to individual crosswalks or touchy situation intersection problems. And we strongly support town staff's request to do a study similar to the Mid-Island Project on the William Hilton Parkway between Automotive Automobile Place and Dillon Road. As we know, this area is filled with curb and median cuts, lots of intersection, crosswalk issues, lots of bike car crashes. And unfortunately, we've had two bike and two pedestrian deaths in this area this past decade. So hats off to you folks in advance for doing this. But having said that, we support the installation of crosswalk lighting at the William Hilton Parkway 278 and the Oaks in the 2021 SIP. But it must have a new crosswalk. Regarding the 2021 SIP, we support the projects as presented, especially the Main Street project. But we are concerned that the Access and Safety Funds might be used exclusively to support single crosswalk lighting projects. The Access and Safety Fund was originally established for pathways to support incremental pathways, access, and safety issues that the BAC would identify and town staff would support. It's a collaborative effort. We are concerned that these funds could be tied up for years putting in crosswalk lighting when there are lots of other projects that bear consideration in our view. In fact, we would recommend to the town that it undertake a study of lighting for crosswalks, intersections, and certain pathways to come up with a plan rather than reacting to difficult situations and treating each crosswalk individually. And lastly, again, we would encourage, jumping on Heather's comment, we encourage the town to move forward with the Main Street Parking, Main Street project. Thank you for consideration and your support, folks. Get ready this weekend. There'll be a lot of people out there, and be safe. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Frank, for your comments. Always appreciate it.
Hearing none, I'll sign off. Now I know how to sign off.
Okay, commissioners, we have two rounds of potential discussion. And as we went through this, you know, we did have a discussion and question period. So don't feel compelled to bring up items just for the sake of bringing them up. But we will go through in order and see if anyone has any additional comments before we call for a motion to possibly move this forward to the Town Council. Commissioner Theodore, any additional comments?
No additional comments. Just thank you, Scott, for all your hard work and guiding our committee.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Commissioner McGowan, any comments?
My only comment is, I was, I'm on the subcommittee, and we had, I have my notes for our meeting in February. Scott has definitely incorporated all the comments from the committee and from the public into this list of proposed priority projects, and I have no further comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McGowan. Commissioner O'Neil, any further comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Alfred, any further comments?
Yes. I think Scott's presentation was excellent, very helpful, and I'm certainly very much in agreement with almost everything that is on there. But I did want to raise one possible exception, and that is under pathways, the Boggy Gut Pathway. I have a question and concern as to whether there is any real significant interest on the part of the biking public for such an additional facilities. And certainly, it doesn't appear to me to come even remotely close to some of the other pathway projects that we have in mind in terms of need or bicycle and pedestrian traffic. Though I would like to urge reconsideration of whether the Boggy Gut, number seven on the pathways, should be part of this list.
Thank you, Commissioner Alfred. Commissioner Perry?
I will state that I'm in support of these items to be done. I do want to kind of mirror off of what Levon said earlier regarding Main Street. It is a very dangerous road throughout all times of day. You know, we've got a lot of people in the afternoon that are jumping on that road trying to bypass 278. While school's not going into session for several weeks now in person, we've got a little bit of time. But, you know, when the kids are back out there, there are a lot of kids on that road, and it is a very, very dangerous main through. And I would love to see a real strong public-private partnership with the owners of the road and the town to make certain that that street gets the attention and the maintenance that it needs, that a pathway that is safe for everyone is provided there. I just think that is a real hotspot that we've got. And the last thing we need is to have any accidents there with our children or anybody else. And so it goes right in line with the crosswalk lighting in certain areas to make certain that our pedestrians are safe. I strongly urge that.
Thank you, Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Scanlon?
I just want to thank Scott for his detailed presentation and for our public comments from Heather and Frank. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scanlon. Vice Chairman Stevens, comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I will echo my colleagues in commenting Scott on the work that he's doing and how he presents these projects. It makes it feel like a good summer novel.
summer novel. But as we move along, I will just reiterate the consideration for being sensitive to a lot of the areas that may be encroached or how it impacts a lot of the native islanders in particular, but just property owners in general. And know that there's some ongoing discussions and mitigations and things that need to take place. And I just hope we continue to be sensitive to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Stevens. And I would, you know, continue to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners. Scott, outstanding job developing this. And Todd, you and your CIP committee have done an awesome job of working this through. Also wanted to reiterate what's been said before, having Main Street right outside Hilton Head Plantation's gate. This has been an ongoing concern for many, many years and a safety concern. And obviously, the safety of those youngsters and the traveling public, pedestrian public and cycling public needs to be addressed. And hopefully, we can come to a quick resolution. And also reiterate the balance that we have to achieve on putting the additional pathways in and being sensitive to the owners of those properties and making sure that those considerations are equally met. I we have another round of questions, but I believe we've gone through this. And what I'd like to do at this time is call for a motion to move this forward. And then, as Teresa calls to roll, if there is an additional comment with your yay or nay, you can interject it at that time. So at this time, I'd ask for a motion to move this forward to the town council as a recommendation. And Mike, you had your hand up first to move it. And Stephen, you had your hand up second. You are the second. So we have a motion and a second. And Teresa, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Theodore?
Yes, and I would add that Main Street ought to be a high priority.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Alfred?
Yes, but I'd like to add a comment in support of what's been said about Main Street, which I both drive and bike with some frequency and have seen fellow bikers hit potholes and bumps in that road and fall off and get hurt. As as a matter of how this is, to my understanding, going to be approached, based on my prior experience at the municipal level and in community associations with private roads, most communities do not take over private roads unless they are put back into original shape. Financially, my understanding is that the business owners are not able to do that. The dilemma then is allowing the public to continue to use insufficient facilities versus the usual practice that the private property owners would take care of the initial maintenance. My understanding is that, among other things that council is considering, is a special tax district, which would permit the property owners to pay some portion of the cost of renovating that street over a period of time. And my understanding is the negotiations are over what portion will be paid over time and what portion forgiven. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. That would make it unanimous. And I want to thank the commissioners for their thoughtful comments. Thank Scott again for leading us through the discussion and thank the public for their participation in the process. Teresa, would you comment on citizen comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Citizens were provided the opportunity to give comments on general planning commission business during the meeting by phone. There were no requests from citizens to speak on general commission business.
Thank you, Teresa. And commission business, I know, Teresa, we're looking at a joint meeting in October. And if you would remind me of that date that you're going to be sending out for consideration by the commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The October meetings for the commission, we would like to combine those two meetings into one on October 14 at 9:00.
And Teresa will be sending each of you out an email to check on your availability. So there's no need to discuss it now. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that 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 will be forthcoming. Chairman's report, I just want to thank everyone for their participation. You know, the Zoom is impersonal, but it allows us to gather from far away places. And the attendance has been excellent. And we've been doing a lot of work and a lot of catch up work, given the pandemic. And I just want to thank each of the commissioners and the staff for all this support and getting this important work done. And committee reports, CIP, Todd, I'm sure that you're delighted that this has been moved forward. But do you have anything further to add?
No, just excited that we finally got approval before the end of the year.
Perfect. And comp plan, Michael, you also must be delighted because we're moving your project forward.
Yes, we are. The our plan will be presented at the meeting on the 16th of this month. And Taylor and the town staff have done a remarkable job. And the development team and all the people and all the other other teams that have come together have have put together an awful lot of great information. I think, as I said in one of the meetings, we are in the 99th percentile in terms of our plan of things that the town can control. One, a point of personal plug here, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Levon said something about Scott's presentation being a good summer novel. I just want you guys to know, especially you, Levon, my book is out now. And so it's a good summer novel also.
Thank you, Michael. Gulligici Task Force, Levon, lots of good things coming out of that. And I expect we're going to get some type of a recommendation soon?
Yes, we had a very good meeting on just yesterday. I'm excited excited to report that we had some progress on the what was being called a historic overlay district. And that will be coming up to the LMO committee. And we've got some real progressive and exciting changes in there. And and I also want to say while I'm making my comments that while while I speak, a lot of times representing the Gulligici culture, we're very sensitive to the community as a whole and understanding that we're all one community. So it's not that we're trying to do special things for special people, but we're certainly trying to do things to help folks that have been here and preserve the culture that we claim that we love so much. And that so we can have participation from everybody. And as I said in the meeting yesterday, we realized that everybody may not get everything that they want. But I think we came to a good place on yesterday. And Todd is a part of that task force. He's present here. And I'd like to thank him along with the other task force members, if they are watching. And of course, staff for their hard work and being willing to kind of step outside of the box and think progressively and be creative and trying to find some solution to some very difficult questions and things that have, in my opinion, have been long overdue. But yeah, we made some great progress, Mr. Chairman, and do the LMO committee can expect something coming up from the Gulligici Task Force. And I'll be looking for that. Mike, I'll be looking for your book on the New York's best seller list.
On Amazon.
Levon, thank you so much. And thank you for your for your leadership on that task force. We look forward to their recommendations to the LMO committee and eventually the full commission. Leslie, LMO committee?
Yes, the the committee that never has has an empty agenda. We are looking to schedule two meetings in September to address the historic neighborhoods preservation overlay proposals. I don't think we've confirmed those dates yet. They're looking at 916 and 923. So stay tuned for for as we keep moving along.
And Leslie, we thank thank you for your leadership on that committee. And as you said, your your plate is never empty. And as we know, Levon is going to fill it up quickly again.
Happy to fill it up for you.
And rules and procedures. Alan, anything to report?
Nothing to report today.
Well, thank you so much. All right, staff report. And do you have anything to share with the commission?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Teresa. I have a couple of notes to share. As Ms. McGowan said, the LMO committee will be meeting. And we have just confirmed that the meetings will be held on September 16 at 2:00. And then again, on September 23 at 9:00. And as Commissioner McGowan said, we will be meeting on the historic neighborhoods overlay district.
What was the time of the September 16, Teresa?
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM. Thank you.
And also on the 16, the full commission will be meeting at 9:00. Commissioner Scanlon had mentioned that the R Plan public hearing will be scheduled for the commission's review and recommendation to town council on that. And and then, Mr. Chairman, as you had mentioned earlier, I will be reaching out to you all later today about the planning commission's October meeting.
Thank you so much, Teresa, for all your work behind the scenes and keeping us all straight and our meeting straight. Very much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, question for Teresa.
Certainly.
Teresa, the planning commission meeting on the 16, is that at 3:00 or 9:00? I thought I heard you say 9:00.
Yes, sir. We changed it to 9:00.
Okay. And then LMO is still at 2:00 then?
Yes.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, we thought we would change the commission's meeting to 9:00. We felt that the LMO committees meeting at 2:00, an hour, wouldn't be enough time.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other business to come before the commission or any other questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you all for your hard work. Levon, you're up. Alan, you're second. Thank you all for your hard work. Very much appreciated.